Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, November 8th meeting, the Committee of the Whole Meeting, and we are beginning right at 6:00 PM. I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of the councillors tonight? Councillor Peterson?
Your worship, I have a matter under closed council for Section 241A.
Okay, thank you. And anything from administration?
Sorry, just for clarification, are you adding that within the existing item? Or do you need a separate council, like a separate in-camera item, like a council dialogue?
Oh, I will be a separate item.
Okay.
Okay, so then I think we're just looking for a motion to confirm the agenda as presented. Councillor Peterson?
Your worship, I would move that council adopt the November 8th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, I wasn't sure I heard. Number three, Delegations 3.1, 2023, 2024, RCMP, Quarter 1 and Quarter 2 Municipal Policing Report. Good evening, Staff Sergeant Will Gosh, nice to see you again, and Sergeant Salmon.
Good evening, your worship, and members of council. My comments throughout the duration of the presentation will be through the CEO, to the Chair, and the rest of council for the report and then follow-up questions. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you once again to give you an update on our policing programs and our progress throughout the date on our selected priorities for the community. It's been a little while since I've been before council, so we've combined the Quarter 1 and 2 reports collectively to give you a bit of a midpoint review as far as where we're at to date. Our priorities as established for this fiscal year remain similar to what they were last year with some slight variations in some of our programming. Our first priority was the reduction of property crimes, again specifically with respect to the reduction of theft of vehicles.
Your worship? Just people are not hearing, it just maybe could raise the desk so that the microphone, people are just saying they can't hear. Yeah, yeah.
Make me feel shorter now. Again, with reduction of property crimes, that being reduction of theft of vehicles, theft on motor vehicles, and break-in enters within the town of Strathmore. One of our strategies that we continue with is our habitual offender management program. Throughout Quarter 1 and Quarter 2, we were monitoring 17 offenders and conducted a combined number of 185 compliance checks. Eight of those offenders do live here in the town of Strathmore, the remainder are in our rural areas. I can tell you that for the persons who we're monitoring in Strathmore, they were all found in compliance. However, we are aware of one person who's returning that has been in custody for just a little less than a year on a crime spree. They started committing, fortunately not within our area, but after we conducted a number of compliance checks and the person found it more desirable to live elsewhere for the rest of their crime spree. We are going to be monitoring that person very closely, and hopefully they do have a change of heart. But until that time, again, the offenders that we've currently been monitoring have been found in compliance within the town. We do have offenders and properties outside of the town that do have an effect on our area globally, which does include Strathmore. The first property, rural property that you see, again, it's still fairly active with the recovery of a number of stolen vehicles, property recovered from a break-in enter within, from gleason detentions area, stolen license plates, a stolen motorcycle, other purses, persons that we found on the property that were in violation of their conditions that we were able to hold for bail hearings, as well as others that, again, were found in violation of their conditions that didn't meet the requirement of a bail hearing, and they were released for court. Property two, we did see a lot of activity through Quarter 1 and petering out into the end of Quarter 2. The reason for that is our work with Rocky View County to see the place cleaned up, closed off, and all of the remaining buildings on the property essentially demolished. So that has happened, the property sealed off, and we don't expect to have any more issues there. But of note, we were finding people with, you know, we were finding stolen vehicles, people on warrants, and in one encounter, it was fortunate that a member was there, that there were two brand-new vehicles off of a dealership that they hadn't even realized were stolen, and through their follow-up, they were able to make contact with the dealership, identify that they were in fact stolen, and return them before they were even noticed gone from the parking lot. Otherwise, again, the majority of our checks did result in, or did not result in, any observed infractions. What we are seeing is that through this program, our known offenders that we are monitoring are mainly, you know, mining their Ps and Qs, and we're hoping that the message has gotten along through their communities that perhaps this isn't the place to be if you don't want to be monitored on your conditions, and generally just, if you're going to be in our area, please, you know, live by a law-abiding lifestyle if you're going to be here. I can tell you just in general observations that more than 75% of our crimes, property crimes, are committed by people who don't even live in our entire area, which causes a bit of a challenge, but we are working with our neighboring detachments. Our district analyst has been very helpful with identifying crime trends. In fact, when we look at, and I'll get to this a little bit later on through this portion here for our break-in enters, we were able to establish a crime series with a person who had hit a number of different detachment areas, including Calgary, and we were able to lay charges in all of those incidents with the help of our Southern Alberta District Crime Reduction Unit, but I'll get to that momentarily. We do have a Persons of Interest Program of generally people that we're monitoring that are no longer on conditions, but perhaps may be at risk of reentering a criminal lifestyle. Typically, people who move out of the habitual offender management program after their conditions are no longer in effect, we do tend to keep an eye on them, and our general investigation section is responsible for that. They do a pretty good job of keeping tabs on who's doing what in town and in the surrounding areas. With our Security Screw Program, it's still in effect. In fact, five of our theft on motor vehicles through Quarter 1 and 2 were actually theft of license plates, so we're hopeful that people will attend our known locations in town and participate in the program to help protect themselves from potentially becoming a victim of crime. We still offer SEP TED services for our businesses as any persons who may be affected by crime, and we are open to proactively attending businesses upon request. We haven't seen a lot of uptake. In fact, we were rolling this program out in the Wrangler Park area and our Rocky View County rural area. We did see some uptake, however, again, if people are busy or if they're just, if they feel their businesses are secure enough, we're not going to pressure them into participating. You'll see in our graphs here, and you know, just as how we've selected what our goals and measurements were going to be, is I selected an average of our five-year historical average just to give us an idea of where we should be in our averages with our, I guess, what we would normally expect to see with our crime rates. Obviously, we want our crime rates to be as low as possible, but again, just so people know if there is a little bit of fluctuations, where are we at within our last five years? I selected a five-year gap because of the two years that we experienced through COVID that we had artificially low crime numbers. That does affect what our numbers are, I just want to, I want to make sure that if we're emerging out of that COVID area, we still are, we're, you know, two years out from it now, that it doesn't have the appearance that, you know, all of a sudden we have a huge spike in crime. We are within our historical norms. As you can see through, for break-in enter, we are at or below our historical norms. Theft on motor vehicles are at or below, we saw a little bit of a peak in Quarter 1, but a reduction in Quarter 2. But we have seen, you know, through Quarter 4 last year and Quarter 1 this year, an increase in theft of motor vehicles. Quarter 2 came down, I can tell you presently through October, we've seen a bit of a spike. There are some persons known to us in the community that are active, and we're taking measures to reduce their impact on the community, either see them out of the community or get to a point where we can lay charges. I can't disclose more of what our programs are at this time, but hopefully, you know, in a short little while, I'll be able to put out a few media releases if we're successful. What I can say is, I think generally half of the vehicles that were stolen were crimes of opportunity, and that's vehicles left running with the keys in them, unlocked, unattended, or vehicles left unlocked with keys in them. The biggest advice we can provide, again, you know, outside of Operation Cold Start is, if it's cold and you're warming up your vehicle, please at least lock it. Those are the opportunities that our known property offenders are looking for in the community, and they do get up, you know, between 4:00 and 6:00 in the morning when everyone else is to find these vehicles. For break-in enters, through the first half of the year, roughly half of them or just over half of them were to businesses. I can say that we were able to lay charges in six of the occurrences. We did have an habitual offender, as I referred to, that had a bit of a unique break-in style with the businesses that we were able to link between a couple, between a couple of different detachment areas, and I believe that was Oketoks, Vulcan, and Calgary, and also inclusive of Strathmore, where a number of charges were laid as a result of making these linkages with these, with these specific types of break-in enters into businesses. Our Southern Alberta Crime Reduction Unit laid the charges, and they were able to hold this person in custody. Otherwise, there were a couple more break-in enters here in town that we were able to put, we were able to lay charges with a few, two new individuals to town, which, again, was, I credit the members that were involved in the investigation with this to identify these people and to hold them accountable. We do suspect them in other break-in enters, but we're still investigating to ensure whether or not we can lay charges in those matters. And again, theft of vehicles by type, more than half are pickup trucks, I can say half of them were crimes of opportunity. We are seeing the majority of them, of the vehicles recovered showing up in Calgary, and we have been successful in laying charges in a number of those instances. Theft from motor vehicles through Quarter 1 mainly was catalytic converter theft, and that's when people are dusting off their RVs, they're finding them in the storage lots, and at some point in time over the winter, they've had their catalytic converters cut off. We've seen a drop in that in our area throughout Quarter 2, but again, we have catalytic converter thieves or property criminals that operate within the general Calgary urban area that are fairly active. One individual has been active in our area, we've been very successful, at least on two occasions, on finding him either in the act of cutting off catalytic converters or possession of, and we've been successful in having that person remanded temporarily into custody until they've been released. They are pretty active within Calgary and the Calgary urban area, and our Crime Reduction Unit is very well aware of who that person is and does keep a very close eye on them. Our second area of focus for this year was traffic safety, and that's again, the reduction of both injury and overall collisions. Excuse me if I could rewind just a bit. From break-in enters and theft from motor vehicles, rather or below our historical averages, and we were reduced from last year typically, so we are making good progress in those two areas. Again, auto theft is one area that we're working on right now. Back to traffic safety, again, reducing our overall injury collisions. I've given you a number of statistics as far as where our results have been so far this year, as far as Quarter 1 and Quarter 2, again, April 1 to September 30th. There were 45 actual impaired driving sanctions, for immediate roadside sanctions that were issued, which has increased from last year. We had an additional 15 72-hour suspensions, so those are people who are not quite at the level of being impaired, but over the acceptable limit, and a 24-hour suspension. We've had three GDL suspensions for new drivers, and we're able to find 20 disqualified or suspended drivers. Now, despite the immediate roadside sanction program, there were still five criminal impaired driving charges that were laid, and those relate to serious collisions that are on our roadways that they're not a candidate for simply having a roadside sanction issued. Our bar walk program remains active, there were 88 bar walks in our local establishments that were documented throughout Quarter 1 and Quarter 2. And again, just to encourage people to come up with safe ways to make it home, so that way everyone can enjoy their evening, but also arrive home safe. Our Red Hats Road Safety Initiative, that's still an initiative that's under development, I'm working on that. However, our focuses have been in other areas to date, but it is something that's in the works. I've given you again, more graphics, again, selecting our five-year historical averages to, so again, it gives people an idea of where we are in the range, and where we are to date is, again, generally at or below where our historical averages are. Injury collisions, we see a little bit of a peak in Quarter 1, but a reduction in Quarter 2, which again, puts us generally at or below our historical averages. I've given a bit of a breakdown as well with the types of collisions that are occurring. One-third of them are backing type of infractions, a lot of parking lots, slow, slow-speed type of collisions, and the rest, as you'll see there, that's in before you. Our third priority, which remains the same as last year, is our community and indigenous community engagement. With that, we have our school liaison program, where each of our schools in our area have a member that's assigned to them, and they do make efforts at least to visit their schools at least twice a month, but again, that's dependent on workload and vacation training, et cetera. There were 34 school visits that occurred throughout Quarter 1 and Quarter 2, and that's generally for members being present, positive interactions with the kids, safety talks, and the updates, the safe plans for schools, beginning of school year in September is when those updates occur. We had a high level of involvement in our community throughout Quarter 1 and Quarter 2, picking up in April, and especially through the summer months when people are out and about. As you can see, we do, through the graphics and the photos in front of you, we had a quite a high level of community engagement throughout the Quarter 1 and Quarter 2, as well as with our indigenous community engagement, that being our participation on Red Dress Day, and as well as the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation on September 30th. The summer was pretty busy, especially through Stampede, the guys that were working for, through Stampede, attended a lot of breakfasts, so they got their fill and then some, but they were still able to flip burgers and help out with the bike rodeos there as well. We had one of our, actually our newest member on Canada Day, who came to us from Edmonton Police Service, he's freshly rebranded, Minton Mountain, that he showed up in his red surge that day, and of the people that were working that day, he fit his the best because he just got it, so he was the perfect candidate, but we did have our members in park through Canada Day. But again, as you see through the next few pages, our members take the opportunity whenever they can to interact with people where they are and try to foster those positive working relationships. One of the last pictures there, the Medieval Fair, they weren't off, they didn't take his head off, they were just joking, but it was actually something to see. I was there myself as a spectator, and the fellows in the armor there really let each other have it, so. But again, our community interaction remains high, we try as best as we can to attend as many community events as possible throughout the area. Our community liaison program remains in effect, we have 17 community groups that we have a liaison associated with, and again, it's another link to the community to ensure that we're able to let them know what we're up to in the community, but they can also have a link to our officers for any questions that they may have, and again, to deal with any community safety issues. Something new that I've released through our local media, and again, we spoke about it the last time I was here before council, councillor Langmay was a student and pointed that out. Our capture program is active within the area, we've been doing some advertising, which includes all of our missed penalties in the areas on their websites, just to encourage people to sign up to the program. Really what it is, it's, you know, it's a registry for people to sign up voluntarily to let us know or identify themselves as a place that has video surveillance. That includes our businesses and our residents. In there, it's simply signing up with your name, what surveillance do you have, and your contact information. What can happen afterwards is if our members are investigating a crime in the area, and it doesn't have to be property crime, it could be anything, they can access the list that essentially shows up as Google Maps, and it plots dots where people have video surveillance, and they're able to contact those people with their video surveillance. A few things that's important to note is even though people are signed up with the program, they can still decide whether or not they want to provide law enforcement with that footage. We can't actually, as law enforcement, live view through people's doorbell cameras or their video surveillance, and again, it's entirely voluntary for people to participate in the program. They can withdraw at any point in time, so I can say, there's at least a handful of people that have signed up so far, I haven't checked as of today, but we're looking forward to seeing a higher level of user ship. It's a program that's provided free to everyone in the province, and we're hoping that people are going to sign up. Couple things to point out as well, the online crime reporting system for anything that's non-emergent can be reported online, and I've listed the link there for it, and Alberta RCMP has an app. If you want to download the app for free, it's got information on the online reporting, what our rave alerts are about, it's got our internal crime mapping, so you can see where the crime data is popping up on the mapping, it also has all of our news releases that are popping up in there as well, so it's something that if you're interested, download the app. Watch Quick Program, fully staffed, we're still looking for a municipal employee supervisor, but they're all providing a very valuable service to our frontline members, and again, we're thankful and grateful for the investment from our municipal funding partners to help make that program possible. Our year-to-date calls for service, there's a graphic there, we're pretty close to where we were last year, we had some reduction in our traffic calls for service, but other than that, the ship is steady as she goes. Open for any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Staff Sergeant, for the report. I'm always impressed with the clarity of it, and the habitual offender management program, it's, I think it's just a great thing, and it's, it really shows you the length and breadth that your officers do to keep an eye on things, and the recovery of stolen vehicles is impressive too, so my appreciation. Any questions or comments from councillors? Councillor Mitzenner?
Does Langdon have a detachment now?
Langdon does have an office, there are three members that are posted there.
Okay.
And they're still hub with Strathmore, just based on the office space, it's, we kind of still have to have an umbilical cord there for some of the things they can't do out of that office, but there are three members posted there, and there is also a municipal employee front counter staff that fields the service there as well.
Thank you, councillor Mitzenner. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much, Staff Sergeant. Sergeant Salmon?
Thank you.
We move now to item four, Confirmation of Minutes, 4.1, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for October 11th, 2023. Councillor Langmay?
I'd like to move that council adopt the October 11th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented in Attachment 1.
Thank you for that. All in favor? I'm not sure if your mic is working.
They're just taking a look to see if it's on our end.
Councillor Montgomery, do you have, are you able to vote visually?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
Okay, sorry, I'm not sure, I had to shut everything down. Yeah, I vote in favor of that, pardon me.
Okay, thank you. We move now to item 4.2, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for October 25th, 2023. Councillor Peterson?
Your worship, I've moved that council adopt the October 25th, 23 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented in Attachment 1.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion is carried. Thank you, councillor Montgomery. We move now to five, Business 5.1, Off-Site Levy Overview. Good evening, Ethan, nice to see you again.
I'm here tonight to give you an update on the off-site levies. We'll go through a bit of a background on what off-site levies are, why we collect them, what our current bylaw is, and then kind of give you what we're planning to do moving forward. Next slide, please. So background, so under the Municipal Government Act in Section 648, it allows for a municipality to provide for the imposition and payment of a levy in respect of land that is to be developed or subdivided. So basically, what does this mean? It means that we can charge a levy for growth, for new developments, for new subdivisions, and have funds collected so that new infrastructure can be built for those new areas. Next slide, please. The intention of this is that growth pays for growth, and we want new developments that need new infrastructure to be either partially or fully paying for that new infrastructure. A comparison, or the opposite of that, would be utility reserves. Reason we have reserves is to pay for maintenance and replacement of existing services. So to give you an example, with a new sanitary trunk that goes through the town, the levy would pay for the additional capacity that would be put into that new system, whereas the reserves would pay for upgrading that system because it's reached its end of life. On the opposite side, if a new development needs something that's strictly for that development, they would either build it themselves or pay a levy to the town for the town to build that, but it's fully funded by that development. Next slide, please. So currently, we have Bylaw 2107, this bylaw was adopted on May 5th, 2021, and it was based off of a report by ISL that was completed in November of 2020. So from that report and from discussions with council, the levy rates that we currently have in Bylaw 2107 ranges between $113,000 and $168,000, depending on the area. Next slide, please. So we have three benefiting areas in town, we have the Northwest, the Northeast, and the South, and the reason that the levy rates change throughout those areas is due to sanitary and stormwater requirements. So in the Northwest, there's the need for future sanitary because there's not a lot in that area, there's definitely the need for stormwater because everything over there would be new. In the Northeast, there is some need for sanitary, although we've got existing, and the stormwater solution is a different solution, which is a little bit cheaper. When you look at the South, sanitary is not really an issue down there, they've got a main trunk line that they can tie into, water and transportation are a need for all areas of town, and they're shared equally, and in the South, they also share in that new stormwater solution, so that's why there's the variance in rates between the each area. Next slide, please. So in terms of payment of levies, what we require now is 30% of the levies are due at the time of the development agreement, so basically, whenever a development comes in, it gets approved, and an agreement is put in place between the developer and the town, we expect 30% of the levies for that area to be paid. Then, as they complete construction, or CCC, they have to pay an additional 30%, but we've also put a timeline on that, is that if it's not completed within two years of the agreement, they have to pay, so it's whichever comes first. And then lastly, the final 40% is due at final acceptance, or three years from signing, whichever comes first. So some benefits to this is the developers have a flexibility in their payments, we're not asking them to pay everything upfront, it gives the town a bit of a guaranteed cash flow once a development agreement is put in place, we do have the guarantee that levies are paid in full once the development is completed and FAC has been issued, and the risk of unpaid levies is reduced substantially. Previous off-site levy bylaws in Strathmore allowed for levies to not be paid until building permit stage, and what that has resulted in is upwards of $2 million of unpaid levies currently, and these are in many areas of the town, and they're all on a lot-by-lot basis. Next slide. So to compare our rates, our current bylaw at $168,000 is less than what the report recommended, the report recommended $206,000, so using both of those numbers, comparing to other areas, you can see that Oketoks is very comparable, Langdon and High River, Cochrane even is just under that $300,000 range, so comparable but definitely higher, and then Chestmere and Erdie are both over $300,000. Calgary's not in this list because it's not even a comparable number. A municipality that you could say is similar in size and maybe location from the city is Crossfield, but their bylaw is over 10 years old, and you can see at a much lower rate, so I'm not sure if their plans are to upgrade that, but that's where they're at as of today. Next slide, please. So when we look at what the bylaw currently charges versus what the report recommended is, we can see a shortfall of between 20 and 33% based on the area of town. Now, council at the time of the adoption of this bylaw decided to provide a discount in an attempt to not deter development, mostly due to high rates, but also we were in the middle of the pandemic, right? So there was many factors being considered, and so the decision was made that water and transportation were a global benefit to the town. We only have one water system, and transportation within Strathmore, you can consider benefits or hinders everybody, so that's where a reduction was given, was in the water rate and the transportation rate. Next slide, please. So how do we currently cover this shortfall? So we've got grants, which are never guaranteed, we're always hopeful, but there is no guarantee. There's reserves, although this money's meant for repairs, not for new builds, so we're taking money from something that's dedicated to one item and using it for another. There are taxes, however, this is similar to reserves, taxes aren't meant to pay for future development, and then there's borrowing, which in the end is still higher tax. And then there's borrowing, which in the end is still higher taxes, just in a different method. So each of these are options which have a downfall of some form. So by not charging the fuller rate, we are hindering ourselves in other areas. Next slide, please. So are there alternatives to offsite levies? There are. Some of those are things that can be done onsite. So there's onsite stormwater retention. And what would this mean is that we could reduce the need for a much larger, community-wide stormwater solution. There's onsite water consumption restrictions. This would reduce the need for, say, reservoir space or license requirements. And there's onsite stormwater and wastewater reuse. And again, this this could reduce our need for reservoir size or license requirements. But the thing with these is each of them are something that requires a full community buy-in. This isn't something that can be done in a single street or a single house. You need a full community to buy into this for it to work successfully. Next slide, please. So updates to the MGA in the past few years now allow for levies to be charged for recreation, protective services, and libraries. We don't currently charge any of these rates and municipalities in the area vary on whether they currently charge these. I do know some municipalities such as Chestmere do have these levies in place. I do know just as recently as last week that Rocky View held an open house in regards to what they're calling soft levies. But we are seeing a trend towards this being more popular and not all of them are charging levies for all three of these items. Some of them are focused simply on recreation or simply on protective services, but it is an option for council to consider at some time. Next slide, please. So what are our plans moving forward? So within the 2024 budget, we have included funds to review and update our levy bylaw. So our hope is with the approved budget is that we would start a study in January and we would focus on infrastructure, but then we would move over and start looking at recreation and protective services and whether that's something that we want to explore. From there, we go to review the bylaw, hopefully update the bylaw, and before it's adopted, have some consultation with the developers. You know, what does this mean for them? We did this with the last bylaw. It was very successful. And you know, of course, I don't know a developer that's going to say, yeah, charge us more money, but at the same time, they were understanding of where we were at and where we needed to get to and they were happy that a middle ground was found at that time. I think in any case, as long as you can defend why you're charging what you're charging, most developers will understand the need for the levies and accept of the rates. The main goal with over 2024 is that if there is a development spike that occurs, we want to be sure that we're charging the right levies at the right time. Next slide, please. With that, I wouldn't mind answering questions if there are any and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. As far as the protective services building that we are going to need in the next several years, and maybe this is either for you or CAO Scoble, is is offsite levies townwide versus a separate tax percent? Is there one that's better than the other as far as trying to generate some revenue to set aside for a protective services building?
So do you, mayor? I would say both options are possible and they could be done side by side. Now, you've got to remember that a levy is only charged to future developments and if we're going to build a new protective services building, whether that's just fire or all forms of protective services, it's going to benefit both the town and future residents. So there's going to be a split on who pays for what, whether levies cover some of it and then however we choose to fund the rest. If if a special tax was introduced in order to fund that portion that covers the current residents, that's an option. If there's many other options, be it grants, reserves, other things like that.
And you can do both of those at the same time if if you want to generate revenue or would you pick or choose?
You've kind of got to pick one or one or the other. So you know, the perhaps restated another way, if if you decide not to charge a levy against it, then the existing population at the time of borrowing pays the full cost, right? Whereas if you do make it a levy, an offsite levy, then the you know, your the growth is paying for the growth portion of it like Ethan said earlier in. So it's actually the existing residents are paying less in terms of the borrowing for that or the reserve or however we fund it.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question I have is when we revisit the bylaw, the offsite levies bylaw, are we looking at increasing the the charges for water and transportation to get more in line with ISL's report?
To you, your worship, whatever the report indicates is the appropriate fee is what we will be recommending. From there, it will be council's decision on whether they want to charge the full rate or a lower rate.
Okay, thank you. And I think councillor, I've done this for almost two years now. I think you were saying that if we don't look at revisiting the offsite levies bylaw with water and transportation, when we provide services to new home construction, we're even a little bit farther behind as far as the 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 price that it we're kind of at the other end of it.
Through the chair. Yeah, and after this many years municipal service, I can guarantee I will never be an elected official, but but that's correct. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Peterson?
So I don't know if this is pertinent to the presentation that you just gave, but I was I was trying to brush up on the changes to the provincial government's offsite levy stuff through the red tape reduction process. So in that, I was unclear as to whether there were any changes around facilities.
Not sure if I'm answering your question, but one of the things, facility seems to reference libraries and recreation specifically.
And they kind of expanded it, right? Like it's it's different. Well, I know it's different than it was pre 2019, 2018, but it looks like there's been a shift again, but I I'm not clear.
So you know, I I have had a couple of conversations with legal professionals and one of the things that they say is because this hasn't been implemented very often, there's really no precedence. So it's almost one of those things where if nobody challenges it, it's fine and I'm not encouraging to
No, no, I understand.
Go outside the bounds, but a similar situation is if you build a fire hall, does that include the fire trucks that are needed?
Yeah. Well, and you know what? It's it's such a good response to the question because I was thinking specifically about libraries and offsite levies to libraries. And when you when you research that, there's a deficit of information, there really truly is. So now we'd have to do our homework. Thank you for that. And my my second question, if I can, your worship. One of the things I think about when I when I hear what you said tonight, you know, when you're old and you live in this community and you've had a family member sit on council forever, there is such criticism about the, you know, prior to how offsite levies are done today, that in those old development agreements, they were so not reflective of the true costs and they were so far away from those true costs that future populations paid an inordinate amount of the price in in the end. And then I hear you say today that we're 30% out. So so I think that there that there is, I just want to say that I appreciate what you said in there because I think there is definitely really future consideration in terms of that that gap. I appreciated it in the report.
Your worship and to you, councillor, not seeing a being a victim to some of those old development agreements and having to abide by them, you know, learning from our mistakes is one of the biggest things. Making sure that development agreements allows flexibility to at least charge what the current rate is. We do unfortunately have some old development agreements that have specifically listed a dollar amount and that dollar amount might have been applicable at that time, but it is no longer applicable and unfortunately, that's all we can collect.
Thank you, councillor Peterson. Any other questions for Ethan?
Your worship, we do, we have to hold a public hearing if we change the bylaw, right? Do we do we have to, does it, if there's a new bylaw like or is it just amendments to the bylaw?
Well, it depends on the on the work that will be done with with Ethan and the consultants. It's typically an amendment, but from time to time, there's there's a a complete rewrite in a new bylaw.
You know, I've heard you, I've heard you talk a lot about consultation with developers and you know, and I know you do that all the time, so that would be another consideration in the process if necessary.
Yeah, it's it's important to engage stakeholders in in this development of this bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Peterson. Thank you, Mr. Scoble. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ethan. We move now to item six, question and answer period. Seeing none. All we need now is a motion to go in camera and the section number. Councillor Peterson?
Your worship, I move that council move in camera to discuss items related to section 24, 1 subsection BI of the Freedom of Information Protection Privacy Act at 6:40, 7:40? 6:40?
6:40.
PM.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are going in camera. Thank you to all the people at home watching.